Welcome to the March 24th meeting of the Franklin School Board. Meeting has been properly posted. Ms. Larson, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble?
Present.
Mrs. Witkowski here. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Witkowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Claude?
Lewis.
Lewis, yes.
Mr. Claude.
Thank you.
Glad to see you make an impact.
Been too long since the last meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, community comment. Participants wishing to come forward, come to the mic, state your name and address. Statements are limited to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comments. If the comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per board policy, Administrative Rules 8300. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Leroy Lip. West Winston Way. I'm a senior. Ninety-three. The reason I keep coming up here is because I'm trying to encourage you people to put that Southview Road through so that the traffic would be so heavy on Coventry and Winston Way. The people at that time that bought that 10 acres really blocked up the traffic. And the traffic problem was a long time planned, the right way to keep that road open. But the people in the school board here seem to think that they can control and do different things than what the major plan was. The other thing is that I'm here because this traffic problem has been created on 83rd Street for the parents to go picking up their children. That's ridiculous to have that kind of traffic and line up in maybe even a half hour ahead of time. I'm suggesting that those cars enter that parking facility that you have on the north side of the building. There's an entrance there for the cars to come in and they can travel through your parking lot and they will be off the street. If not, they will be parked on the green part of your front and side facility where there are no homes. It would be an ideal way to keep the cars from blocking the drives and irritating the neighbors. And it would give us another safer way to travel through 83rd Street. I wish you would take a good look at that situation because we got too many cars parked there to pick up the children. And I guess when I was younger, my nieces were always picked up by their mother and father. And it is a nicer and safer way for the kids to get home. But other than that, I feel that there should be some changes so that the cars would not be lined up in front of the houses. You've got that big turn there that you can line up the cars to get in. If you go on towards the end in Southview, there's an entrance there. And I think you will find that you could get all the cars safely and the kids safely home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Seeing no one else wants to make a comment, I'll close community comments. Item five, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sapursky.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any school board announcements or announcements from the board members? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on April 14th here at the ECC at 6:00 PM. We also have a regular board meeting on April 28th here at the ECC at 6:00 PM and a Board of Education workshop on April 28th at 7:00 PM here at the ECC.
Excuse me, the agenda says it's at Forest Park Middle School on the 14th? Is that?
It should be the other way around.
Yes, I did read that wrong. The 14th is at Forest Park. Thank you.
And the other question is, should the workshop be the hour before the board meeting and then the board meeting after the workshop? Or as stated here, where the board meeting is only going to be an hour? Is that backwards?
No. It isn't, but the workshop, I'm sorry, where are you seeing the? The workshop is on the 20E. Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Usually the workshop is the hour before the board meeting.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, I don't know why it was like that. Do you know why it was like that?
It was on the agenda spreadsheet that way.
I will look into it and figure it out. And then I'll make sure it's posted properly. You're right, typically they do come before the meeting itself. So, sorry.
And why is it at Forest Park?
We anticipate a larger group of people will want to attend because we're going to provide the board with information about the fall learning program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Item eight, district administrator update. Dr. Miller.
Just a few things tonight, nothing too formal. We're of course looking forward to our spring break next week. Everyone's getting pretty excited about that coming up. We have seen a small uptick in the number of COVID cases in our schools, primarily at the high school. This uptick is consistent with what's happening in other school districts and in the area, basically. It's not, it's not anything significant, but we are having or seeing one or two cases a day. And then we do have, you know, a number of students who end up in quarantine as a result of that. The mask mandate is due to expire or the order by the governor, I believe it's April 5th. We fully intend to continue with a requirement that all of our staff and students wear masks at school, even if a new order is not issued. Last time, we didn't find out till the day of. I don't anticipate we'll find out any sooner than that this time either, so. We're spending a great deal of time on that fall planning report for the board. I anticipate having that report to you by April 7th so that you have ample time to review the report, which outlines the information that we've put together regarding what, what has happened this year and what we anticipate our assumptions for next year and how we would recommend you proceed and we proceed together in opening school next fall. We're also working very hard on our coherence plan. We have a number of focus groups, including our stakeholders, to gather information about our core strategy areas, how we can plan to, again, become a better place to learn, better place to work, and part of a better community. And then finally, I would just remind everyone to check our website for our fall musical. You'll have the opportunity to watch that live streamed, so it should be a very fine performance. And I hope you can carve out some time to see our students perform. Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, reports, presentations, and other board business. First up, we have our board self-evaluation. Members had a chance to review this. Was there any discussion that you wanted to bring up?
Did everybody participate? Well, this represents all board members?
All, all board members did submit, yes. And the directors had a meeting and submitted comment together as a collective group.
Is, so everybody submitted, but there's the first, for instance, on the first one, it was 80% to 20%. I don't understand how with seven people or eight people submitting that percentage works out. So did people just forget to answer that one? That's, that's confusing.
Dr. Kohn, are you listening to that question? Because this is Qualtrics and Qualtrics data. He might be able to drill down if he can get in there.
Yeah, I'll see if I can take a look. At least I think you're the owner of the account, so I'll take a look.
That's, that's a good question. And Dr. Kohn can get into the actual data to explain that better.
It's not particularly important, as long as everybody participated.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Do we expect to kind of maybe look at this more closely during our retreat? Because I'm not sure unless people have, I recognize that some people might be, might not be here during the retreat that are here now, but, so we want to make sure we understand or recognize important comments that people made.
I do feel like this is something that we should spend some time on at some point. I mean, if we're, I realize we have to go through this, but doesn't, doing it doesn't do any good unless we talk about it. And we can talk about it for five minutes, but that doesn't, here, but that doesn't really do any good.
Were there any comments that stood out to you that you wanted to bring up?
Maybe we just walk through each question, at least each area. I suppose just throwing it out now. Instructor? So, first one is governance. I think we were asked to submit three areas. I guess we're missing a few, but.
Well, in the back two pages are comments that were left. The pie chart is the percentage of how the question was answered. That's where you get on this one. Question of governance, this is the indicators. Eighty percent felt we consistently meet all of the indicators. Twenty percent consistently meet most of the indicators.
I think Ms. Witkowski, you're probably referring to page three. Those are the comments related there.
Right.
Not everyone filled in three things. Some people just put one, so it wasn't mandatory to put three. But that, that would be kind of the starting point for any discussion on that area. Like, what, what would be left, what would be on page three for the board to think about or respond to?
In area one, we talked about, somebody said something about the coherence plan update. What, what is our role in the coherence plan in terms of the focus groups and?
So the consultant will be meeting with the full board as a focus group to provide input into the draft plan. And then the board's role as a whole is to make decisions at this level that support all those goals.
Is that the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It looks like somebody thinks we need maybe to focus on workshops and just board development, I guess, is, seems to come through in one comment. I don't know how people feel about that, but it's something we can talk about maybe at the retreat, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The WSB typically offers a lot of really nice opportunities for that. And they, I think they did the best they could this year with COVID and the virtual environment. But there's many opportunities outside of having someone come here and speak to the board for you as individuals to, to do that kind of work. So it may be a matter of just making sure you're aware of those opportunities so that more people could engage.
Does that need to be a specific goal that we would maybe add to our goals or something? That everyone would go to an individual session to increase that board development?
So, again, when you do the retreat, you typically can set your goals then. But the board has gone in the direction of setting goals specific to supporting the coherence plan. But that doesn't mean you can't set your own kind of governance goals, like how to, in terms of being a better governing body. So that was the long answer. The short answer is yes, you could set a goal like that.
One of our retreats is, in the summer, is generally geared toward that.
Right. Like in this one, it does, you know, areas to improve. Couple of comments were centered around, you know, those types of long-range planning, state funding impacts. And those are things that, you know, in that workshop environment's a great place to learn more and talk about those. Want to go through each one of these?
Well, if we can quickly flip through this, I don't know. How many are there? Four, five?
I can jump to the comments portion of it.
Page five would be yes.
The next one is establishing your expectations. Anyone discussion on these comments?
Well, I do like the comment that we should start inviting students and educators back to our meetings once it is deemed safe for that.
I agree.
I think that's very important, that we see those stakeholders.
Agree with that. I'm wondering what our, now that more and more people are becoming vaccinated, teachers are becoming vaccinated, what, what do you see in terms of loosening, Dr. Mill?
We haven't really had much discussion about doing any of that the remainder of the school year. We have really good protocols in place and opening the buildings up to visitors and other people, I think, just would be somewhat problematic. So we're not really talking about doing that this year because it's like a floodgate, you know? Unless you're going to be discriminatory in ways and say, only these people can come, but these people can't. So logistically, it isn't something we've been talking much about. It's after spring break, the time goes pretty darn quick and school year's over. But we really want to continue to protect the, the children and, and the staff because not everyone's been vaccinated or will choose to be vaccinated for a while.
Could you limit it at least just to board members so everyone could get to their assigned school once during the school year or not at all?
I would, I'm, I'm definitely thinking about that.
I mean, I understand the flood.
I think it's that one group that probably would have the privilege of, of getting into the schools, but.
Certainly, you know, I understand the floodgates, you know, like visitors at the hospital, you'd have to set a limit and stick to it. But it seems like as board members who have an assignment to be in contact with a school, it'd be nice to at least be able to get to a school once.
Absolutely.
Any more on that one?
I also noticed the comment on equity and I, I would say I, I'm looking forward to more work on that, to be included with that as a board. I think that really helps us grow and understand what's happening in our buildings. So I do appreciate that comment.
And then the next one's improve and establish or maintain districts' priorities and standards on page seven.
A lot of this talks about the coherence plan and once the coherence plan is created, we, we stick to the coherence plan as we've done consistently. And I, I think though, I think that's certainly true.
Yep. Next one is board responsiveness, page nine.
I think it makes sense that that, that was tied to the pandemic response, which I think has been successful by any measure.
Yes.
Especially compared to our, the other districts in this area. But I also think that we have to make sure that we, coming out of this, that, that we assess what, what worked, that was changed, and how we need to change to go going forward. What things we need to implement that, that changed.
Yes, because there could definitely be new best practices that we've discovered along the way here. And then on page 11, engagement by the board.
And this one is kind of the lowest, not that it's a low rating, but it's comparative speaking. It's our least best area.
I think a lot of that dealt with the pandemic because so many of the things that we were used to doing, like visiting schools, community events, athletic events, there was just no way to be visible in the community.
I also think we need to keep improving our communication, especially two-way communication with the, with the district, with the community.
I do like the idea of being allowed to have a small blurb within district newsletter from the board.
I couldn't understand what you were saying.
Oh, the comment, the third comment down on page 11, it says that the board could have a place in the district newsletter. Just, I, I do like that idea, the idea of a blurb, just maybe coming from the board president. Doesn't have to be lengthy, but just some updating the community.
Or even, you know, in the family newsletter, not that it would go every week, but that family newsletter that does go every week, maybe once a month, has something from the president about what happened at this month's meetings or twice a month after, you know, depending on the month.
Yep.
Or even, I guess you could do like, hey, next, you know, it comes out on Fridays. Next week, there's a board meeting if you are interested in coming. So many people don't realize that they can even come. I mean, we've got a kind of a crowd, but so many people don't even realize that they can come to a meeting. So even just inviting people, hey, there's a meeting coming up next week. And then the following week would be an update of what happened at the meeting.
And then on page 12, we had suggestions to improve the survey itself.
Before I do that, can we just back up one?
Sure.
I mean, there was some comment about making meetings virtual in real time. What is, how the board members feel about that? Because now it's taped, it's not real. But most public meetings nowadays, you can stream anything. It's not, it's very technically possible. So why are we not doing that, I guess?
I think that would really increase access to our community and make it more accessible for everyone to be able to feel like they're a part. And I would, I think it's a great idea.
And I'm not sure what the practice is generally among school districts. I don't know if you guys are aware of.
The issue we run into is the closed captioning for the meeting. It has to be accessible to everyone. And prior to the pandemic, there were groups nationwide that would go around and search out school districts, cities that were streaming without good closed captioning and they would sue them for that. So in order to stop that, we put in closed captioning that is done. And it says which person in the room said this and then has the correct language there. If you, if you watch some of the meetings and you click on closed captioning, it, it isn't identifying who's saying what, so you, you can't tell. And then some of the translations are just ridiculous. You could never follow this meeting. So that's what's pushed us back from going in that direction. Because when, I'm sure when the pandemic is over, this will ramp up again and they will, they will start coming after school districts that have meetings like that, unfortunately.
Does WASB have guidance for things like that? Or are those, are they successful? You know, what, what happens with those? Because other districts, I assume have opened, I don't know how many, but I assume some do. I don't know.
I mean, even Milwaukee Public Schools has a live stream of their meetings. I mean, even big districts, small districts.
I mean, anybody sitting in the audience right now could livestream this meeting over Facebook, right?
Right, but would not include the closed captioning, so. It, it's not some, I mean, I, I would speak to the attorneys at WASB because it really is a legal issue. It falls under American Disabilities Act.
All right, that's where it is at.
It'll be interesting to see after the pandemic if some of the schools or, you know, local districts who are currently streaming their meetings, if they continue to do that successfully, maybe we can learn from them what system they're using.
Or if there's been any advances in technology for real time. But it probably wouldn't address the issue of who actually made the comment.
I know the city was using closed captioning on their meetings. When's last, I don't know if they're still doing it. The last one, that was just an audio. But it was really, really bad, really bad, the closed captioning. Like, I would never want that to occur in this district where the closed captioning completely misrepresents what someone's saying. It was really bad. If we're going to do it, we have to do it well.
Right.
Over.
Yes. Any other discussion on this topic before we move on? Okay. Item B is the budget document revisions. Mr. Alexandrovich and Mr. Milzer.
Right. Well, we've worked together on this one. And Mr. Alexandrovich reached out to board members to gather further information after our last discussion at the board table. We discovered that some, some board members like numbers, some board members prefer narrative, some board members like a combination of the two. And we tried to meet these differing requests in the new budget format. We also looked at some additional documents because most of the ones we looked at were from some of the larger districts in the state. We looked at comparable districts, districts around us. And it was interesting that some of the.
And it was interesting that some of the districts used just the DPI one-page format as their budget document that goes to the board, especially in light of the fact that I think to a board member, no one likes that page at all. But there are some boards that that's really all they have. So after looking through all that information, we decided to start fresh with a new budget document and come up with a new format. And in doing that, we were looking for the format that would build the budget story in a logical sequence. And something that would have both the numbers and the text about an explanation, or maybe a graph on the same page. And we started leaning towards the rescind document. And did everyone notice that there was a, that you could click on the rescind document and see it in the document? Okay. That one puts everything together. And what we thought we'd do is use that as kind of a starting point. And we would add more detail to it because they have, for instance, on their general fund, it's just one page. And I would estimate that by the time we're done putting in comments and breaking that up, that that one might be 10 to 15 pages by itself. And then each fund would have a separate page after that. It would describe what the fund does and have notes on some of the points that are really relevant for a given year. So what we were thinking is that we would have a cover page and a table of contents. And then it would go to an executive summary. And that would be an easy-to-read narrative, something that explains why it's a good budget. It would give some of the accomplishments that we've had during the year, talk about maybe some of the external factors we're facing, for instance, the state budget. And it would have the property tax effect. It would be no more than one page. Then we move on to enrollment. Because enrollment is the basis for many of our forms of revenue that we receive. And we would have an explanation of the link between enrollment and revenue. We'd include a chart and a graph of five years of enrollment by level. We'd also talk about open enrollment as a specific form of enrollment and give five years of data for open enrollment as well. Enrollment drives staffing, so that would be next. We do have a comprehensive staffing report that we receive now. And although we reference it when we do the budget, it hasn't been included in it. And it seems like we already have this good information. We should include it with the budget to say, here's the next step. Here's what happened to staffing based on the enrollment that we're projecting at that point. So there are about six pages from that report that we would bring into this one so that the information would be right there and you could read through it sequentially. The revenue, and we'd look at a high-paid, high-level summary, which would be used for budget adoption. Also have expenses on there, somewhat similar to what Waukesha had, but not the DPI format. And then the following pages would contain the general fund information in much more detail than Racine's example, and then all the other funds. And each page would have those explanatory notes on them. There would be some that would carry over year to year, and that was one of the color cues that they used there that if it was in, I think it was green on the side, it dealt with this year in particular versus something that was on the top that was really the same year to year. So we'd look at doing something like that. I'd have Mr. Kafka help me design something like that. And again, we would have all of that, all the description and the numbers in the same place. Next, we would do the tax levy summary. So that would be the tax levy for each of the funds. Would talk about the estimated property tax effect. Would give a narrative that provides information and a history of the property taxes because they have changed over time. The next piece would be the frequently asked questions. This was pretty popular with the board members. I would contain a variety of information that would help the people understand the budget. I gave some examples, you know, how do school districts' revenue limits work? If the district gets more money, does that mean more state aid? Does that mean they have more to spend? Private school vouchers, do they affect the budget? Why does the district have a fund balance? Some of these things that come up again and again, we could have in there that we could point to for a good explanation for people. And then there'd be a glossary of terms. We would try not to use too many acronyms that weren't explained in the document. We try and always explain that. But still, there are terms that we use that don't come up often for the average person that we could explain in a glossary of terms. So the next steps, I think, are the, certainly the board can discuss the new budget document outlined here. If we have any sections that should be added, or we have a glaring omission of some kind, we could add something to the document. Hopefully, the board could come to consensus on those. We'd make those changes and then use that as our budget document for 2021, '22, which would come to the board in June, and then you'd have until July to look at it. And then after, after working with the budget for a couple of weeks, we could talk about that as well at the July meeting. If it met the need, provided more information than we've had in the past, or if there are any changes we needed to make to it at that time. And that, that was it.
But we are looking at this as a living document. It's not as of June, when you get the first mock-up, that that's it. Obviously, we can make changes, add more information. It's not, this is not a one-and-done. Because new things will come up, new ideas as to how we can change it, and we need to address that.
Okay. Is this a complete list? Because there are some things I think that are, I want to make sure that we don't forget about.
I think there will be, there will be things that aren't specifically listed there, like in an explanation of open enrollment or revenue or revenue limits. There's going to need to be a lot more information, possibly charts and graphs that go with that to explain it, to make it easier to understand. So for some of those, there would be more information.
I mean, I would like, under executive summary, some mention of new initiatives, specifically new initiatives that are in the budget and not buried in some change column. Under staffing, I would just ask that it's not just teacher-focused, but, you know, all staff. You don't always get.
The staffing report covers all staff.
Okay, it's still in front of me, so I'm not sure. Under tax levy summary, are you going to discuss equalized valuation? Or is that, would that be part of the funding formula? It is a key factor in revenues, state revenues.
It would probably, it would be in one of those places. It could be in the revenue limit.
Okay, but it will be displayed and you could see the content.
Yeah, one place or the other, wherever it makes more sense, it would be in there.
And then under the revenue expenditures, it's, you're going to include, I mean, there's the program perspective, and there's also the account perspective, salaries, benefits. You're going to give us both views of that? Is that correct?
Right. You would, you would have, like, physical education as a program, and you would know the salaries, the benefits, the supplies, equipment. Not sure if they have anything else on that particular one, but you'd get a breakdown within that program on what those costs are as well.
Okay, and there'd be, it would be a roll-up and a drill-down effect, so it's very easily to cross-foot and make sense.
Right. You'd have several years that you could compare there of those same types of numbers.
Okay, also, I think a fund balance schedule would be important. We have a larger fund balance than we've had in the past, and it's something the board should be aware of, especially what the budget's impact on that fund balance might be. And I did check our fund balance. I just came across the policy, and it does indicate that we do put that information in our budget document. I'm not sure it's in there now.
Yes, it is.
But a schedule, beginning and ending, so it's clear.
Yeah. That's in there, and that would be probably part of the one page here.
Okay, I mean, we don't have any to look at, so it's hard for me to.
Yeah.
Say.
Yeah.
And the frequently asked questions, is this the list, or, because?
It's the start of the list, I would say. We can always add to it. There are some things that aren't on there that were in some of the other districts' FAQs that after we talked about it, seemed like they were more culture killers than good pieces of information to put in, especially things related to Act 10, which was over 10 years ago. To keep repeating that as part of your budget doesn't seem like a good idea at this point.
I think it, I think it is important to know though how we manage the impact of that, and it's in the state budget to reverse that. So it's not like it's.
It's in the governor's proposal.
Well, it's, so it's being discussed, and it was proposed. So I guess I'm saying that it would be, I think it's important information. And it's in other districts' budget. I have to hear what you're, when you said cultural killer, I'm not sure what you meant by it.
Well, what are we talking about when we're talking about that? We're talking about what benefits were taken away from employees and how their salaries were limited. So it's not the best cultural item to have in the budget pounding on that year after year after year. If it's something that the board wanted an explanation of for future board members, maybe there could be an FAQ in the board library having something like that, but I don't think the budget is the place for that.
So in other words, you don't want to open old wounds.
Exactly.
Well, I guess it depends on how you say it. There was clearly pressure, I mean, I'm not going to tell a story, but there was clearly pressure on the expenditure side. Something had to give. So.
I understand that very well. I lived through it. But it's still, it's still not that easy to tell an employee, you know, we were short, so we decided to cut this that made a lot of a difference to you. We cut your thing, we didn't cut something else. So I think if it's, if it's the board and future board members that is the concern, that could go in the board library as to, here's what we did, and here's how it happened. And then it's kind of off to the side for a board member to read if they'd like to. But we aren't trotting it out every year in a document.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think that'd be good. Although, you also have on your question list, has the district ever had to make significant budget reductions? Which goes back pretty far, in terms of years ago.
It does go back pretty far, but it was almost $6 million. So it was huge. And people do tend to get complacent that those types of things would never happen or that we've never been through them. So it's a, it's a good reminder that we did have to make really large cuts at one point.
Based on, driven by enrollment?
Driven by enrollment and state budgets that did not let us expand our budget.
Okay, it just seems a little bit inconsistent when you think that that's significant, but Act 10 is just, didn't happen, or?
I don't think it's, I don't think he's saying it's insignificant. I think he's saying it's, there are some things that are better. I like that, I like that this, I like a lot of things about this proposal. Mostly that you can get as much information as you want, or as little information as you want. And it's encapsulated in, you know, it's encapsulated where it's easy to, it's easy to digest for both board members and community members who maybe look at the budget, maybe look at the budget once a year, if at all, and for 10 minutes, and they want, they want a quick bite of information so that they can make a decision. And for board members who need to go into it further, will be able to delve into it further. And I think that's, I think it's important to have that. I think it's important to have that type of information availability, especially with technology the way it is today.
I guess my other concern, Jim, is you do highlight, everything is on your plate, and we know there's a lot going on. I'm wondering if you consider bringing in consultant to get this done, so that we know it's done. And, I mean, we use consultants for other things. Why would we not? We have auditors that could take this on or, and really kind of revamp and just make it easier. Given the current, you know, virtual, not, the current capabilities of modern reporting systems and accounting systems.
You make it sound very tempting.
I would say we should do it.
But each of these requires something to be written about every area of the budget. And for that, I don't know as we would want to bring somebody in from the outside to do that. The writing will be the biggest piece of it. The numbers will come from our systems, and we can manipulate them to fit whatever our format is. But I think in this case, we would need to be hands-on on writing that so that we have it the way we want it, rather than just hiring it out to someone. As much as I would love to do that.
Why don't you do the numbers? Do, you know, you don't have to do it all, but it would give you more focus on the narrative, and that piece would be done. And that piece and method of doing it would be transferable from year to year. You can take that forward.
Yeah, I don't know of anyone that does that, and I just feel like it would be more hassle than it would be worth to keep reviewing efforts of someone working on this when it's really more of a creative, if you can be creative in a budget. It's a creative document coming forward. So I see spending time with Mr. Kafka and making sure the way this looks and getting it all written out. And then it's not as big a deal year after year at that point.
The first year is going to be the most difficult. But I agree with sometimes what you're saying. Sometimes when you have a consultant in, it takes more of your time to explain to them every year to get them up and running.
Well, and you have the historical perspective, and you, I mean, you've lived this budget for a number of years. I mean, you've, you know, it's kind of, you're most familiar with it, probably easiest for you to do the writing of it and explaining. You've gotten all the questions for how many years? Do you know what questions need to be answered?
Well, and I also think that as Mr. Alexandrovich said, it's a living document. So that means we get this first draft of it, we take a look at it, it's fluid, we can change it, we can improve the things that you're suggesting, if the board so chooses.
Well, I think, I agree with you, Mrs. Larson. I think, I do think, though, that we need to make sure that we have a mechanism in place to keep those improvements going. So that, as we, as Mr. Lewis said, the first year is going to be the hardest year. But we're going to want to make changes, and we're going to want to make changes this year. I don't know if we, I don't know what the mechanism is to do that. But in order to keep moving forward on this and get this done by June, what do we need to do? You know, do we, do we need to form, do we need to form some sort of ad hoc committee in order to do that, led by Mr. Alexandrovich?
You know, the July meeting could be just kind of, it could be a regular item on July meeting, you know, to take a look at what the document was like for the year. It's pretty easy to do in July. We don't have a lot of items for the July meeting typically, and we could certainly start there. And if there was a lot of work to be done, then maybe we'd put an ad hoc together. But we could just be part of the regular routine to review the budget document in July and say, how do we want to tweak it for next year? What do we want to do a little differently in there?
I'd just hate to get to July this year and be like, oh, boy, there's, we didn't have time to put it together again. Now it's going to be October, you know, now we're busy again for the summer getting ready. And we talked about this in. And we talked about this in, we talked about this in December or November, it is now almost April. I realize things don't move quickly, but we have to realize things don't move quickly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If we want to move forward on this, then we need to, then what do we need to do? In, and, and I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I guess the question would be to ask, Jim, do you feel you need help with this going forward? And Alan too, I mean, or are you relatively confident that you're gonna have a good first draft by June and, you know?
Yeah, I, I'm determined to have a good first draft by June. Could I use help? Yes, I'm, I'm, or we're strapped in the business office, so I, I do need, I do need to hire a position no matter what. And I think that could help for next year. But if, if we agree that these are the pieces we want, then, it really, we don't need a committee then. We, we have the layout of what we're doing, I just need to make this happen. And you're, you're right, if more comes up, it could take me away and I'll have to figure out how to do that. But the planning, I mean, the planning we're doing now is for this summer, for next school year. So I'm hoping that between now and the end of the year, uh, I'll definitely have the time to put in to get this done. And I do need to start working on it right away. So that's why I was hoping that tonight, we could, we could either say, let's give this a try, or here's an item that may be another section here or something, so that I can get going on it and, uh, and, and get it done for the June meeting.
Well, you have.
Think it's a good starting point, sorry.
No, that's exactly what I was gonna say is, you've gotten some good input, some feedback. I think this does make a good starting point, um, as far as the question of, you know, you hiring somebody in your office or a consultant. Having worked with consultants, they would probably come in with a, their own template that they would prefer to use and it wouldn't be as original to us, um, capturing probably some of the things we're even describing here. And at what cost would a consultant be?
And if anyone knows Jim, and I feel like I've known you a long time, you will have it ready for us to go. I have.
I think so.
Confidence in that.
I think our auditors would be a great place to ask for some assistance, they, they do our books and our annual report, they know us. Let me just say that I think that would be a logical place to ask. And also, I, I'm concerned that in July, we're supposed to be actually talking about the budget, not what the budget looks like, right? So, it's kind of like we should have this already squared away, because we should be talking about the budget, not formats and colors and. So, um, aren't you concerned about that, that we'd be, when do we talk about the budget, what's in it?
You'll be doing both in July, you'll first talk about the budget and then your next item on the agenda will be, how did this work for you? Did you get the information you needed?
I thought we were gonna see an example before that, personally, that's what I, that's how I thought it was gonna work and.
I, I originally thought so too, um, and that, and, and my thought on that was if it looked more like what we have now, like if it was just numbers, we could mock something up. But when, when we went with Racine, which I, I think is a good document, um, it's very interesting. It, it, it plays to both sides, people who want words, people who want numbers, uh, there's just a lot of work there. So, uh, that's why I included the three example pages from Racine. And this is kind of the look we're shooting for, might look a little different, colors might be different. But having the, having the separate banner with things about this year, a general statement about what's on this page, and then whatever information we need on there as far as numbers, uh, charts or a graph to explain something, uh, that's what it would be like. But I, I have no doubt this is gonna be at least 100 hours worth of work to get this done. So, um, it, it is a lot of work, but it, it, that's also the reason I can't walk in tonight and have it for you as an example. But if you, if you look at those documents and you say, yeah, that, that could be good and we like all these pieces to be in there, then that's what we'll have. And we'll, we'll be able to see the budget through that lens, we'll be able to talk about the document and whether that works or not, or there's changes we want to make. And then next year we'll make those changes.
We, we did get a lot of information from everybody and, and I really appreciate your inputs. Gave them to Jim, then Jim did a lot more research, he went out, what, 15 or more districts, examined their budgets to see what did they have? Was there something we were missing that we could incorporate? So he has done just a great job, in my opinion, uh, to this point. And yes, I would have loved to have seen a mock-up of the budget so we know what we're looking at, but that's just looking at it. It's not like we don't have a budget, that first draft that we got, what, February? That is the budget. Now we're looking at, how do we present it, how do we expand the information? And that's what we're gonna get. It, it's not a whole brand-new budget in June, same budget with expanded information to look at, how can we move forward with this?
I guess I'm not clear what you're talking about in February, the budget in February.
Draft one?
Draft one?
The audit?
No, didn't we get draft number one already?
No.
No?
No, we had the auditors come in.
Oh.
That was what.
That must be what I was thinking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, so, I mean, we're not in a bad spot, I agree. I'm also wondering about the timetable, the timetable was missing in this outline. And I think every year in March, first meeting in March is when we have the assumptions, budget assumptions presented to us. When does that happen?
Uh, that will be in April. First, we need to know what we're doing next year and how we're holding school, it's a different year. Normally, you know, we would be dealing with unknowns from a state budget or knowns from an ongoing state budget and unknown enrollments. Uh, and at this point, we haven't even presented what we're looking at doing for next year. So, so this year that needs to come first and then we would build our assumptions off of that.
But a ti, I think a timetable should also be added to this document, it keeps the public informed as to what's happening when.
Sure.
That's also missing.
I remember liking that from the examples we had, I, I, it was early in the examples, I don't, sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head, but there was a timeline of, and it was a short timeline, so I, I agree with, uh, Mrs. Wachowski.
I mean, I, I guess I just want to be clear that it's more than just a format change and a look change. It's, we want, we want to, I want better information. And more transparency and more just oversight. So, when I read your summary and I, I read just the summary and you've certainly elaborated beyond what's on this document, I do kind of get, feel like it's really just, um, reshuffling in, uh, you know, adding narrative, you know? Some likes numbers, some like narrative, no, we all want better information. I think we all want better information and transparency, we want more than we got before. Not just, it's not just because, you know, I said some like numbers, some like narrative.
We, we received information from each board member on what they wanted and it doesn't match with what you're saying right now. So, you're, you're speaking for yourself.
Does anybody, does everybody here want?
People that might agree with you, um, I, I, we're not making things up. I mean, this is, when you get the budget, those are the numbers in every one of those categories. And the new format takes like pages of information from the back and puts it into the document along with the spot that those corresponding numbers make sense. So that as you're looking at it, you aren't just looking at numbers, you're being able to read what it is that's going on in that area. So, it is better information.
I wanted to just make sure, Jim, that I'm not gonna get a category of expenditures that says, objects over $300, objects under $300. There's gonna be something a little more descriptive. But that will not be on anything that we see.
That won't be on anything you see.
Okay, all right. That's when I say, I, board members, do you want to see that?
Well, I am all for more detail, you know that, you know, when, when, again, the one I, the one I preferred was the Waukesha, where in here it just says instruction and, uh, I liked the more detail. The more detail for me is always easier to understand where they, where they show all the different accounts. But that's personal, that's my personal preference.
And I, I totally understand that because as, as someone who's been a manager of a budget, it makes sense to you.
Yeah.
And it makes sense to me. But some of the things that were in the other budget documents are what I use to manage the budget. And that's not the proper level for the board. The board, the board is doing oversight, uh, it's a policymaking body. So you're kind of at the 20,000-foot level rather than right in, right in there. When I came to the district, the, the board got all kinds of information. Um, the board would tour all the buildings on a Saturday and decide which buildings and grounds projects would be done. We would have a two-hour discussion about which school had more supplies than the other ones and why was that? Who is spending more on telephone? And at the same time, our buildings were in horrible shape. The Chamber of Commerce wrote a thick report on how bad our schools were. Our fund balance had been given away in previous budgets to keep the tax levy artificially low. So when I started, our fund balance was negative $15,000. We were essentially bankrupt. And that came from micromanaging from the board and not letting the people who do this for a living do the job. So, that's why I, I want to make sure we get this right and we have the board getting the information at the board level that makes sense. And I believe that's what we're gonna do.
I think that's a good place to be. They don't need to know how many pencils or paper clips we're using, that should just be part of the budget.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Wow, are we still using pencils?
Every day.
Yeah.
Well, I use a pen now.
Okay.
Anything else on this point? We'll move on. Okay, item C, Board Clerk's Report for the Election Notice, Ms. Larson.
Thank you. Notice of School Board Election and Candidate Ballot Positions. Notice is hereby given that a general election is to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, April 6th, 2021, for the offices of school board member. Three school board member, three school board seats will be filled for a three-year term beginning on Monday, April 26th, 2021. The ballot positions for the general election are as follows. Position number one, Angela Christie. Position number two, Maxud Khan. Position number three, Claude W. Lewis. Position number four, Angela Beer. Position number five, Shu Chi Wadwa. Position number six, Ann Sapersky. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Item D, the Treasurer's Report that is available in the Board Doc's Library. Item 10, School Board Liaison Reports, Ms. Larson, back to you.
This is my show. Ah, Policy 5224, Student Personal Dress. This policy was last reviewed in 2016. Dr. Miller has consulted with legal counsel to revise this policy. The changes that are included are as follows. There is new language that prohibits any personal attire that is likely to cause substantial disruption and/or interference with learning or activities. New language prohibits personal attire or grooming that presents health or safety hazards to students and personnel. New language was added that allows the principal to delineate in the school handbook the types of clothing that do not comply with this policy. New language describes an appeal procedure for such appeals. And the administrative rules have been updated to reflect the minimum information found in every school book, every school handbook. And I would be looking for a motion to approve the revised Policy 5224, Student Personal Dress.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Wachowski?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sprague. Any discussion?
Uh, yes. As I read through this, especially in the first paragraph, where it talked about, uh, in order to maintain a safe and productive academic atmosphere and it goes on to say, uh, has caused or is likely to cause a substantial disruption of a material interference with learning or school activities. That seems so subjective to me.
It is.
So, that.
And there, there are things that I can go back to where I've seen. Uh, I use, the example that came to mind as I was reading through this was when Trump was running for president and they were putting up these signs and everybody thought he was a racist and a hater and we'd be in a atomic war within three months. And there are people who are seriously scared and they were, they're showing schools where they had to take those signs down, vote for Trump. And at some point, if it's so subjective, who's gonna make that determination that their right to free speech, uh, is taken away if they wear a shirt that says, uh, Vote Trump? And I'm using Trump as the example because he was very disruptive with people. You either hated him or loved him.
Even if you take politics out of the equation, um, what happens if someone is making a statement on a T-shirt, you know? And I'm trying to think of a, 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 one that would be maybe offensive to a group of people, but, you know, like an NRA T-shirt. You know, what if someone came to school and with just an NRA T-shirt on? Not, you know, how would something like that be handled? Or is that just up to the discretion of the teacher and it may be okay in one school where it's not in another?
So, disruption is disruption, you know? So, we're unable to deliver learning in the environment because of a disruption. Or the, um, there's a flood of phone calls to ad, administration over something that's occurring that prevents them from doing their job. So, it, it, it impacts us directly, that's a disruption. This, this language here is legal language that a court would use to say it was or wasn't, right? So, they would rule in a case by saying it was a substantial disruption or a material interference. Those are the terms that would be used in a court of law to substantiate a claim, you know, that someone's free speech, it was denied.
But then the, then the, what is the definition of substantial?
Well, that's what a judge would decide, right?
Right.
That's what a judge would decide, so, um, and, and that's why I had an attorney draft the language. So, we will decide that, as we do every day, with someone's conduct in school. If it's a disruption, then we take action against that.
So, I mean, it could be the same T-shirt on a different day in a different building and it wouldn't be the same.
If it doesn't cause a disruption, right. It needs to trigger a disruption of some sort.
And is a disruption one person? You know, what's, Mike has an NRA T-shirt on and I don't like it and I complain to the teacher, is that a disruption? Or is that?
So, there isn't.
Tell somebody to get over it.
Yeah, there isn't a single.
Or are you the disruption that complains?
Well, what, and if, and if, it, if I have an NRA T-shirt, which I doubt would be, um, a substantial, in the court of law, I doubt that would be a substantial disruption. It doesn't, it, I don't think it would matter if 100 people said that this was disruptive to them. It's not, it's, I, I, I would expect that that's a, I would expect that that's covered under free speech.
It is. It's about what happens in our environment though. Like if it, if it impedes children from concentrating and learning because that's all they're doing is talking about and perseverating on somebody's, um, T-shirt, then we have to take action to prevent that from happening in the learning environment. And of course, there's a continuum of things, you know, when you, there's such a continuum that you would respond to automatically certain things. If, if a child came with a nude image on a T-shirt, well, obviously, we're not gonna wait for somebody to say, that bothers me, take it off.
And, and, and you know, I, I use the example of NRA and. And, and, and you know, I, I use the example of NRA and, and what if someone came with a T-shirt that said Black Lives Matter? You know, that's, that's another issue that we may have to deal with someday.
We, we, we have to respond to a disruption in the learning environment. Not that it bothers someone, but if it bothers someone to the point where they're, they're impeded from accessing their education, then we have to respond to it.
And that's where we have to trust that our administrators are in tune with what's happening in the classroom on a day-to-day basis to understand and make those judgments of this is just a T-shirt that, you know, somebody's wearing versus the atmosphere is truly disruptive. And that's, that's their, that's why they get paid the big bucks to be the administrator.
Right.
I assume in practice, something like a T, a T-shirt hasn't been disruptive if it said NRA on it, for instance, or Black, or BLM.
I, I hear very little from our principals about this coming up in our school.
I mean, but I'm sure profanity on T-shirts and things like this is, I mean, that's just common sense.
Right. You know, um, alcohol, you know?
Right, right.
So on a continuum, you know, but there are certain things we're, we're very careful, very, very careful about and, and we'll consult our legal counsel before we do certain things to, because we want to, you know, understand what the rights of individuals are and respect those rights. But we have to respect the rights of everyone to access their education. That's why we're here.
Any other discussion on that?
Good point, Ellen.
I guess just on the guidelines page and the second paragraph with the green lines, the last sentence. Administration should confer with the appropriate district officials before acting. Who are you referring to for district officials?
Me.
Where the buck stops.
Alright, thank you. So your administration would be building people and then you're, okay, alright, thank you.
Until that, I will say good luck.
Yeah. Another question, another question I have is that the old guidelines, you did have some pretty specific consequences. And there's no consequences spelled out.
Yeah, um, our legal counsel did not recommend that you be that specific in terms of the response.
But this would generally what's, what would happen, what you've crossed out, right?
And basically, I, I, that's probably not a bad thing because if someone does come with appropriate clothing, the goal is not to get them out of school, it's to have a change to something appropriate and carry on.
And like I said, this is, this is hardly ever, ever comes up. Our kids are, you know, they test the waters, but they're, they're compliant.
And they have to get by their parents too usually.
And we do have other things and kids will flip the T-shirt inside out or, it's very rare that it gets very challenging.
So ready for a vote?
Yep, we need a voice, voice vote.
All in favor to the?
Reconfirm.
Reconfirming with the?
It's approved.
Approved with the, with the changes. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Policy 5440, Physical Assault. The administration is recommending elimination of this policy for the following reasons. It is not a required policy. This policy is redundant to policy 5400, Code of Classroom Conduct, and that policy is a required policy. All this information is also found in our school handbooks. So I would be looking for a motion to eliminate policy 5440.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Ms. Wickowski. Any discussion?
Of course. What does 5400 say because this is a? I, I just thought physical assault was something that we would take such a strong stance against that we'd want a policy on it. And, and so I'm, I'm not sure what 5400 says to take this strong of a stand on it. And in, in addition to that, I, not only physical assault, but, uh, how, I would have added bullying to this one as opposed to getting it out. I think not only the physical hurting of somebody, but the emotional can be more devastating than a physical assault.
We do have an anti-harassment bullying policy that addresses that. There's some very specific procedures that, um, are related to that policy. Um, I do have the Code of Classroom Conduct and Student Conduct. It was just reviewed by the board in March, last March, um, and in 2020. So the respective principal and, uh, each school shall designate sanctions, including, excluding, excluding corporal punishment for infractions of the rules which shall relate to the kind and degree of infraction, help the student learn, take responsibility for his actions, and be directed where possible to reduce the effects of any harm which may be caused by students misconduct. So the sanctions would include calling the police, which is, you know, what in a physical assault, um, most likely would happen, particularly with older students. I mean, I'm not talking about a, a younger student pushing another student aside or down. So I, I feel that this policy does, you know, indicate that we will take action. And we don't have to have a separate policy that says we, we take a separate action for a physical assault because it also falls on a continuum, which I just described. You know, anything from something very aggressive to a child pushing another kid down in line. And the, the current policy we have had a lot of specifics, again, around how we respond, which again, our attorney says is not, not really the best thing to have in policy.
I'm still struggling with not having a, a policy specifically against physical assault.
Looking at 5400, um, it talks, it says, the rules shall require that students conform to reasonable standards of socially acceptable behavior, respect the person, the rights and the property of others, preserve the degree of order necessary to the educational program in which they are engaged, and obey constituted authority and respond to those who hold that authority. So I feel like your question about the getting rid of physical assault because it doesn't, you know, nothing will specifically say physical assault, physical assault. I think that's, in those four things that were just, that I just read, that's saying we won't tolerate anybody who's going to assault somebody else. You know, that assaulting somebody is not conforming to reasonable standards and respecting the person, the rights and property of others. So I feel like the physical assault is covered in this policy.
And the first, the first sentence also after the opening line says, is an expectation that students behave in a manner that is not dangerous to self and others.
So in the high school handbook, maybe this will help you, um, it, there's a section called Threatening Violent Behavior. So it's pretty specific in here. Inappropriate behavior, both physical and verbal, shall not be permitted in school. And then it describes things as that, that are prohibited, battery, fighting, or similar behavior, verbal abuse, harassment, disorderly conduct, gambling. So it's, it's in these handbooks as well with some level of specificity.
Yeah, I don't think the handbook is, uh, you have to have it in the handbook. I, I get that. But I, I'm still of the mind that this is so important that the handbook just doesn't, doesn't do it justice. The board actually has a policy against it and I'm looking at the classroom conduct, student conduct one. And I understand how we're saying it. It probably covers it. I, I'm just very much against physical violence.
I think we are.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I think it does get covered in 5400.
Okay.
And I, I think having it so spelled out in the handbook is where the, the expectation hits the road. I mean, that's where the students are supposed to be, meaning parents and students know what the expectations are. They're not going to read a policy that we put here, but if it's in that handbook, it can be covered and reviewed at the beginning of each year and.
It also covers in our school safety policy, which I know a lot of, you know, it's a fairly important policy. It talks again about students behaving appropriately and appropriate to their education, you know, all that. So it's kind of almost repetitive in school safety, that policy, that we expect students to behave in a manner that is safe both for themselves and for others.
Okay.
Ready to vote? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries to eliminate the policy. Item C, Board Liaison Reports. Do we have any?
Okay, I did attend the SWSA, um, meeting where we had the state budget director on.
Uh, Mr. Milzer was there.
Oh, you see there, um, what's the biggest thing that you were surprised by, Jim, I guess? I mean, the state's in excellent financial shape.
That was the most interesting thing I thought was how they got that way.
And why, how it's explained?
It was explained that people who are well-to-do are doing well. And they, uh, they've made a lot of money in the stock market. They're still doing well at whatever they were doing before and some industries have taken off completely. Internet purchases are through the roof, so they're taking in a lot of tax revenue.
Right, right, that was amazing. Although I wanted to ask, well, what about the other side? The cost side, unemployment must be also very high. However, there's probably federal dollars that backfill that. I didn't know if he had said that. But, um, so, and the budget as proposed has a lot of money for education. Are you hopeful with that? I can also share the slide deck with all of you. It's pretty easy to flip through, big numbers, but don't be afraid.
That'd be great.
That's all I have for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I attended the, um, CISA meeting. I get to attend the CISA meeting in person next, um, next month will be the first one that I attend in person. So I haven't had a tour of anything out there, but, um, uh, we talked about the pricing for, um, CISA for next year and, uh, um, and voted on that. I also, uh, attended the Franklin Educational Foundation meeting. They have a shoe drive going on. I don't know how many, they had a pickup at the high school this past weekend. I believe they have another one this coming weekend. So, um, that shoe drive is, uh, is generally they get a lot of shoes. So anyway, if you have shoes to donate, please, please feel free to do that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone else? Appreciate your attending this. Any school or community engagement reports?
I will say that, um, my school, I think Is Country Dale has, they're reading a book together, A Boy Called Bat. I did check it out in the library, read it. It's a delightful book, but I haven't really done any of the activities. But I think it's kind of neat that they're, again, trying to build their community virtually.
Very good.
I, I think, um, I talked with, uh, Dr. Mowbray, um, as well this past week, um, at Southwood Glen. And, um, to what Linda said, I think they're doing a really good job of building community in the, in any way they can over there as well. The PTA is, has been, um, has been well-attended. The events that they can have virtually have been well-attended. They've, they've done a lot to keep their community going. And I think that's really important this year.
I was able to observe a little bit with the, um, middle school, the Forest Park Middle School forensics team sent, I want to say it was 20 or 25 kids to the state forensics meet this past weekend. And it was all virtual, but it's pretty neat to see these, I mean, kids as young as sixth grade getting up and even if it's live from their bedroom, give, you know, performing, giving a speech, what, you know, even at age 11 or 12, not being afraid to just, okay, there's, you know, an audience in front of me, even virtually, and really, um, kind of rising to that challenge. And it was pretty exciting to be at a state level and especially in this challenging year with everything having to be virtual. It was pretty neat. I was really proud. I was really proud of those kids.
Very good. Anyone else? Alright, thank you. Item 11 is to go into closed session. We will not be taking any actionable items during the closed session. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) for the discussion of teacher performance and for district administrator's self-evaluation, presentation, and review of performance.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll call both.
That's right. Thank you.
Mrs. Wickowski, aye. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Sprague?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
We are in closed session.
We're back in open session at 8:35. Item 12 on the agenda, our school board meeting debriefing. Any board member comments?
I, I think although there's quite a bit of angst about the new budget format, I think it's going to work out well.
Thank you for that work on that document.
Yes.
With Mr. Milzer.
Agreed.
Anyone else? Alright. Item 13, Future Agenda Items. Friends of Frank, Friends of Franklin Recognition. Principal Action Plan Update for Forest Park Middle School. The 2021-22 School Year Learning Program. Board Officer Elections. Appointment of the CISA One Annual Convention Delegate and CISA One Board of Control Member. Health Insurance for 2021-22. Board Retreat Planning and the National School Board Convention Report. Item 14, I'm looking. Sure.
What about Budget Assumptions? Is that future agenda?
I think Jim announced that would be in April, after we outlined for the board what the learning program would look like.
Well, these are future agenda items.
For the next two.
But I think it would actually end up being in May because we wouldn't be talking about the future of the learning.
You'll know that on the 14th, April 14th, so there's a second meeting in April that you could do the budget assumptions.
Right.
I'm sorry, is it not on the list?
No, it's not on the list.
Oh, okay, yeah, um, we'll have to get it on the list.
Okay.
Okay. Good catch. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Larson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wickowski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are adjourned at 8:37.